There you go. That will be. You want to go ahead and start it?
Yeah.
Just got a gun from Butler.
I know.
Before we begin.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Colored man, ORF clerk Colorado.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor pro temp Marshburn?
I'm present.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And councilmember Vance?
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand and join me, place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmembers, in lieu of having our formal invocation this evening, I thought it would be appropriate for us to pause and remember the tragedy that happened in Virginia Beach, especially since it influenced a municipality there and there were any number of folks who tragically lost their life. So this evening, what I'd like to do is ask this assembled group, if you are inclined and can, to stand and like for us to just remember these folks through a moment of silence. And then I will conclude that for us, if you would do that at this time. Our Father, may all those who have suffered from this terrible, terrible tragedy and the families that are left, would you envelop them with your love and your care? We pray in Christ's name. Amen. Next on the agenda, petition and comments. Time on the agenda for anyone to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda. If you wish to address the council, come to the board and state your name and address. The hearing now. Go to adoption of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, I would approve the -- I would move we approve the adoption -- excuse me, of the agenda, but I'd like to, if I could, add a closed session at the end of the agenda in regards to a personnel matter.
Second.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Presentation do have any?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
You got one public hearing? Petition 1903, David Pampf.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is an annexation petition. This is for the Buffalo Springs project, which was a conditional use permit which was approved in January. The site's on Buffalo Road. The total acreage is around 23 acres. Zoning is MF1, Conditional Use District, District C, 207. And we did run an ad in the News and Observer to meet the legal requirement. And this is a vicinity map of the annexation site outlined in orange. Tiffany Woods is located to the north. Breezeway subdivision's located to the southeast. And this is a survey map of the site. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And this was a requirement of approval for the conditional use permit.
Move we adopt ordinance number 20193975, approving the annexation?
Second.
Motion made, say aye. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Anexation 1904, David.
This is another annexation petition. And this is regarding a site on Dynamic Drive. The address is -- I cannot remember what the address is, but it's owned by Vic Byrd. And this is regarding a site permit application that is pending, SP 17-19. And this is also a requirement of approval. The site's 5.5 acres in size. It's own service business. We did run a legal ad in the News and Observer in the public hearings tonight. And this is a vicinity map of the location outlined in orange. Here, and this is Mechanical Boulevard. And Timber Drive is located to the west. And this is a survey map of the annexation boundary. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Question? Although he's not connected to the front mechanical, Mr. Byrd has access through an adjacent lot on the side, so we don't have that issue to contend with down the road, do we?
As far as access?
Yes.
No, sir. This tract is part of this tract here. So this is all one piece. It's just that the front portion here is inside the town limits and the rear portion is outside the town limits. So it's all one tract.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to move adoption of ordinance 20193976, the annexation petition. It's submitted by Vic Byrd.
Second. Second.
Motion made second, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Phil, we've skipped over the public hearing on the previous application.
Yes, sir.
On the annexation for Buffalo Springs. Best counsel on that. Captain Behringer. Public hearing is open and closed. That's the only annexation for property.
Press up, Mr. Mayor. We need to get next to the budget.
Okay. Thirdly, it's -- third is the budget, public process.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we'll have the second public hearing for the FY19, FY20 recommended budget. So in terms of the overview, we're going to go over the recommended budget. We've obviously taken some steps since we originally released the recommended budget, but we'll go through it just to get us to where we are now. Then we'll review some potential changes to the recommended budget and then finally talk about some future budget dates. So the recommended budget had several major themes. The budget was a first step in a multi-year process to address some structural issues that we identified as part of a multi-year review. As part of that review, we realized that growth and core requirements would exceed available revenues despite continued growth in revenues. And that was looking at baseline operating requirements. So the cost of baseline costs, such as group insurance increases for personnel, raises, baseline increases in operations as well. So once we realized we had that structural deficit, we considered a variety of different options within the recommended budget to balance it, one being to kind of try to fix it within one year, which would be a very large tax increase, one being to kind of just try to scrape by and figure out and work on it throughout the next year. What we ultimately decided to put forward was a balance of all those different options. So a tax increase, as well as some reductions and some deferrals and some use of one-time funds to balance the budget. Using that approach, we were able to meet most of the core requirements that were required based on some critical needs, but there were still many requirements that were not addressed that we felt as staff that were deserved. Some budget highlights. The property tax rate was recommended to increase by 0.3 cents from 53.25 cents to 56.25 for $100 of assessed value. The budget included five new positions. And it also included reductions of almost $417,000 in unfunded decision packages or new items totaling over $1.5 million. So the multi-year forecast was something that started the budget process to a certain extent in terms of getting us to where we are now. It was originally designed to be a new tool prepared by staff to review baseline funding requirements. Again, baseline would be no new items, just the cost of doing business in future years. And the hope was that it would help ensure that the town is positioned to address future requirements as time goes on and to match ultimately expenditures with future requirements with the revenues that are available. And as we were doing this forecast, again, we identified a structural deficit. This next slide highlights the structural deficit more clearly. So as you can see in the FY20 budget, when we started the year off, we had a $1.45 million shortfall. So that means that resources were exceeded by expenditures by $1.45 million. And this did not, again, include any new items. It was just what departments had originally requested and our original predictions in terms of revenues. Our staff went through the multi-year forecast. We identified a variety of different issues on the expenditure side that were driving this. So several things that were out of the town's control because they were based on mandates or just the cost of doing business with growth. So some of those items included the cost of $163,000 in this year's budget to cover the costs of upcoming elections, funding of nearly $184,000 to cover solid waste costs primarily associated with customer growth, significant funding for new items and new town facilities and properties, funding of nearly $134,000 to cover increased contribution rates for town employees' retirement system. And then we had $437,000 to cover merit-based salary adjustments and positions approved out of cycle. One thing that was not noted here, and there was not an increase within this year's budget, another item of note is that over the last four years, the town had absorbed $950,000 of group insurance rate increases. So there are a variety of those different drivers of the budget on the expenditure side that have put us in a challenging position. In addition, we made a variety of different strategic decisions that led to this situation as well. So funding of $365,000 was redirected to support street resurfacing efforts. And this was based on a consultant study that determines that the amount of funding the town was putting forward for resurfacing efforts was insufficient. And even with this amount of funding being redirected, we're still projected to slightly decrease in terms of the road's grade as time goes on. So it's still not sufficient, but it's a good step forward. And we are also in the process of getting rid of debt financing for vehicles. So in the past, as we needed new vehicles, we would finance them and then pay off the loan. And now we are in the process of both paying off the loans that we have from our existing purchases, but also covering the full cost of new vehicles. So that's creating a situation where we're spending more on the total cost of vehicles than we would have in the past. Next slide has some revenue highlights. So the increase in town-wide assessed property value was 190.7 million, or 5.5%. Little over $301,000 in sales tax, an increase of $130,000 in interest income, an increase of a little over $102,000 in recreation fees, an increase of $90,000 in motor vehicle fees. So this was another issue where staff was looking at the revenue and trying to figure out why exactly we were having robust revenue growth, but it wasn't sufficient to offset the cost of rising expenditures. And as staff began to look into this, we started to review this chart that everybody is seeing from the city of Raleigh. The city of Raleigh compiles this on an annual basis, but what they do is assume that every locality, every municipality listed on the left-hand side has the same value, home value, as the houses in the city of Raleigh. So for the town of Garner, our average home value is going to be less than what the city of Raleigh is where a different locality, perhaps Apex or Cary, might have a higher value. So it wasn't accurately reflecting the impact to taxpayers within localities. So what the town did was using GIS, look at all the different municipalities and figure out the average tax value of all the different homes in the municipality and apply that to this chart. When you do that, it ends up being that Garner, the average household tax impact is the lowest in the region. A couple other things I would point out here. A lot of folks look at the property tax rate being fairly high, but they also don't look at the annual solid waste fee side. If you look, most municipalities are charging on a monthly or quarterly basis some sort of fee to account for the solid waste cost, but that fee is within the property tax rate in Garner. So if you just took that out and we were just billing for solid waste, it'd be approximately 0.6 of a reduction. The town also doesn't have an annual stormwater fee, so there are a variety of those types of things that lower the impact for the average household in Garner. This next slide shows the budget summary based on the 0.3 tax increase. So the largest piece of growth is the $2.808 million in property tax, but driven by growth, but also by the rate increase. Permits and fees increasing $559,000, and that's primarily the motor vehicle fee. Sales tax, other taxes increasing $311,000, primarily based on sales tax and their governmental with a slight decline. And that was based primarily on the way we're budgeting for grant revenues in the next year's budget. In the past, we actually budgeted for it and then we'd have to change the budget as the grants came in. Moving forward, we'll just adjust the budget as the grants come in and it's more accurate because at that point, you actually know how much you're adjusting as opposed to just estimating for some unpredictable grants. Fees for service has an increase of $122,000 almost for primarily recreation fees. Interest earnings increasing as well based on the current market conditions. And then other financing sources decreasing by $447,000, primarily based on a decrease in appropriated fund balance usage. As I mentioned, the town then took some additional balancing measures. So again, we had reductions of $417,000 in unfunded decision packages totaling over $1.5 million. And we also utilized appropriated fund balance of $626,000 to meet one-time requirements. That was a reduction, but we still did use some of that to meet some one-time needs. Using these strategies, we were able to meet most of the core requirements within the town. So the next several slides go over the various decision packages that were funded. So the first slide summarizes some positions in public works. The first position being a Parks and Ground Supervisor. This position was identified in the 2016, 2017 pain class study as a need. And basically, the managers within this division were so overloaded with doing administrative functions associated with managing personnel and other administrative tasks that they weren't able to actually get into the field and manage activities. So this position will allow the division to address that. We've also included a building maintenance technician. The town's overall footprint has grown significantly and the recreation center will come online next year. So this will allow the facilities management division to keep up with that growth in the town's building footprint. $95,000 was for a construction inspector. This position will ensure that the work of both public and private projects is being completed properly. So as the town continues to see development on both the public and private side, this position will help make sure that that work is being done correctly. $50,000 is for the final installment for the Unified Development Ordinance rewrite. Then we had $45,000 for the Garner Economic Development Corporation. This will allow them to transition from being a singular focus entity to a townwide economic development nonprofit. Almost $36,000 for two police grant positions. These are based on growth in the town's overall population, but also the land footprint. And as we continue to grow and have more people, we will need to continue to add positions to meet the current service demands and to provide the same level of service. In addition, the department anticipates receiving a grant that will cover 85% of the year one cost. And this will allow us to buy a lot of the big-ticket, one-time items that come or one-time for intermittent costs, such as a police car and the various equipment that is associated with outfitting officer. So that'll be a significant savings for the town. We also have $9,000 to cover WRAL campaign. These costs are associated with running a six-month series of promotional articles about the town on the WRAL website. And then almost $9,000 for a middle school camp. The town's current camp, Camp Kaleidoscope, was at max capacity and also includes both middle school age kids and some younger kids. So adding this additional camp will enhance capacity, but also allow there to be a camp for middle school kids and for younger children so they can socialize with people in their peer group. And I would also point out that the net cost, when you factor in revenue that'll be generated by the camp, is almost $2,300, so not a significant cost. So the final summary of the recommended budget, as I mentioned, takes a critical step forward, putting the operating budget on a sound financial footing. So it's that first step in the process of addressing the structural issues that we noted earlier. Tax increases are necessary based on a combination of market forces, increasing demand and unfunded mandates, which have forced spending increases. So those budget drivers that we talked about, the things that we're required to do based on growth, the things that we're just required to do based on mandates are really driving our costs. It allows us to maintain a high level of service at the lowest per household cost in Wake County. And this is even after the tax increase is factored in based on the chart I showed previously. And it provides needed investments in core town services and infrastructure. So it allows us to meet the needs that we have to provide service. We move forward into future budgets. We'll continue to utilize the multi-year forecast to ensure that we're in the correct position and we're thinking about future years and what we're going to be able to do and that we're going to be in a correct position to address future needs. And we're going to review funding priorities to ensure the town is investing in areas of strategic importance. So we're going to make sure that we're putting the money in the places that we should be putting it. All right, so that summarizes the recommended budget. Since that time, there have been a variety of events. So I'm just going to provide a quick summary and get us to where we're at today. So on May 17th, we had a budget work session, all-day-long work session, where we reviewed the budget in detail and obtained feedback from council. And then on the 21st of May, we had a special budget work session where we provided a variety of potential revenue enhancements and other reductions that could have been utilized to either create additional revenue or to reduce cost within the budget just to provide council some different options. And coming out of that meeting, we had direction to provide various budget scenarios to just give a sample of the types of things we could do to lower the tax rate and what we could still fund. This next slide summarizes those scenarios. The first one is a 0.2 increase, so a reduction from the 0.3 increase by half a penny. So you can see on the top side, the tax reduction is $182,000. So that's the impact of going from 0.3 to 0.5. Then we have an increase in real estate tax collection rate, an increase in interest income estimate, and then a small increase in the amount of appropriated fund balance utilized to balance the budget. Utilizing this approach, we'd be able to fund the pain-in-class study, which will likely be right around the $150,000 mark. We're still in the process of putting the final touches on that, but it should be right in that ballpark if not a little bit less. Does not allow us to fund the fire position for a half-year to reinstate communications reductions. We also, as part of this scenario, did appropriate or plan on appropriating FY19 revenues to purchase budgeted items. So this was the items in police and public works. It's the money we received from New Bern for the work performed during the hurricane. And those two departments were going to purchase some one-time items. Was also going to allow communications to purchase some various equipment and inspections and planning to make some initial purchases of some supplies and various other items utilizing revenues associated with their department. We were also going to use unclaimed economic incentive funding to cover GDC cost, the year one cost of adding GDC. We're going to eliminate funding for snow salt in public works. So this was going to require us to potentially purchase salt if we had multiple significant snowstorms during the winter. It would require us to defer four police vehicles. And that's that last line and ultimately ending up in a balanced budget. The next scenario is a 0.25 or 0.25 of a penny decrease from the 0.3. So from the revenue side, you see the tax rate reduction. It's a little bit less in lost revenue based on it being a slightly higher tax increase. We'd recommend the same to revenue enhancements. And then we'd also be reducing fund balance usage in this scenario by $21,000 as opposed to increasing it. We'd also fund the pain-in-class study. This scenario allows us to fund the fire position for a half-year, also reinstate communications reduction. We'd stake the same approach with appropriated the money for FY19 revenues to cover FY1920 requirements, the same approach with the GDC. We would not eliminate funding for snow salt and we'd also defer four police vehicles. The final scenario, the 0.3 tax increase, would obviously have no change in terms of the tax rate reduction. And then we would take the same approach with the two revenue enhancements and we would be able to reduce fund balance usage by $42,000. We'd then take the same approach with the pain-in-class study, the fire position, the communications reduction, as well as the FY19 revenue, GDC. And ultimately, the only other change would be deferring two police vehicles of the seven originally recommended as opposed to four. So if that, those are the budget scenarios. What we have upcoming in terms of the schedule. On June 18th, this proposed council adoption. So on the 18th, I will come back and we will hopefully be adopting the budget. And then August 15th would be published in the adopted budget and budgeting form. So formally publishing it, putting it out for the public to review. So if that, I'll take any questions.
Question? Earlier, it says we've got maybe $385,000 dedicated to paying off debt for VERT. How many more years will we have of that, of paying off debt?
There's two more years before all the loans are paid off. So FY21, we would have a payment. FY23, I believe, would be the first year that we wouldn't have a payment.
Will they be reductions in succeeding years or will they be the same?
It'd be the same year. Both loans would come off. There was a mix-up in terms of when they were paid initially and there was a different schedule. So I believe they will both come off the books in FY22. And then we'd be debt-free in FY23.
It'll still be that 385 for the next two years?
It'll come down slightly, but yes, it'll still be two loans existing for the next two years, I believe. two years, I believe.
Yeah, thank you.
Mike, in scenario two, which is the one that I think I personally favor, that includes a 2.75 cent increase, and both that one and the three-cent increase does incorporate the fire position for a half-year, which I'm inclined to favor, despite of the fact that there are other departments that we weren't able to authorize positions. But at any rate, if, obviously, if we don't replace any of the police vehicles in that scenario, is it four vehicles, I believe?
Yes, sir. It'd be four of the seven that we originally recommended.
So looking ahead to future-year budgets, if we're trying to keep up with the VERT process there, we'll have to either double up or in some form or fashion try to, in future years, make up the difference. And I guess I'm trying to determine in my own mind what's a reasonable way to do that. Obviously, that's going to be an added cost in future budgets, but I'm sure the police department would like to have all their replacements at one time. But place two in successive budgets, I don't know if that gets us all the way caught up because there'll be other needs in future years, or is it likely you can do it that way?
Yeah, we're not suggesting that we would get rid of the vehicles, so at some point we would definitely have to replace them. The current replacement schedule of about seven vehicles per year is about a 10-year lifecycle for each police vehicle. And based on the criteria we established as part of VERT, that's on definitely the higher ends. So we'd likely at some point have a year where we'd have to replace more than seven vehicles at one time, and that would have an impact on the VERT program and obviously the funding.
And what else?
With the grant that's going to be allowed for the two new officers, the grant will cover the cost of the vehicles for the two new officers, correct?
85% of it.
Okay. I think one thing we discussed, it would cover all the equipment they would need, including the vehicles, right?
Yeah, it covers 85% of the year-one cost for salary equipment, anything that we're going to need to outfit those two officers.
And then we pick up full salaries next year?
I believe the schedule was we pick up 50% the following year and then...
5% right. 1575?
Eighty-five. Yeah, it does go down, but there is a two-more-year period where we're receiving a portion of the funding for the salaries.
Can I have a close just... Well, just a minute. And remind me, I don't know if it was you, Michael, or somebody cited, it's always at least a little interesting to understand how the average citizen is impacted by, for instance, a two-and-three-quarters penny increase. I guess it's based on the average cost of a house in the Garner area. How much does that add to the tax bill?
$55.
How much? 65, did he say?
Average house cost or value is taxed at $200,000, then it's $20.04, so it's $55.
$55, okay.
$5 a month.
I think that's all I have for now.
Not this morning.
I want to see if any members of the public want to be heard on this.
All right, so the next public hearing is on the economic development budget. So the one pager I have up summarizes the full economic development budget for the economic development department. So you have the economic development budget total, ultimately $248,125 as part of the manager recommended budget. And you have the economic development partners budget, ultimately $97,869 in the recommended budget, primarily increased by the $45,000 we're putting towards the GEDC, ultimately resulting in a $345,994 budget as part of the recommended budget. And that is a 14.4% increase over FY18, FY19, and that increase is primarily a result of the $45,000 included for the GEDC.
Michael, could you comment and state why the $45,000 is required for the GEDC to keep its nonprofit status?
Yes, sir.
By the government regulations?
Yes, sir.
What we're going to use, instead of using new dollars, is we're going to use dollars that weren't spent in this year's budget.
Okay, I call media back to order after a recess. For those of you who may be watching via Facebook, our mayor is okay, and he's going to go ahead and take the rest of the night off, and we're going to get him back to his house and let him rest and relax a little bit. So we'll continue the meeting. Mr. Vance is assisting him right now, but he will rejoin us shortly. So I'm going to go back and sort of formally open the public hearing as it relates to the budget for economic development.
Yes, sir.
Mike, you were in the midst of that, I believe, so if you want to resume at this time, that would be a proper thing to do.
Yes, sir. So just high-level notes again. So the total increase of the FY1920 economic development budget is recommended to be a little over $43,000, $43,580, or 14.4% over last year's adopted budget. And that is primarily related to the $45,000 for the GEDC, which is required for them to maintain their nonprofit status and required by federal law to maintain their nonprofit status. With that, if there are any questions?
Councilmember, any questions, comments? Also, since this is a public hearing, if there are any folks in attendance who care to make a comment, now would be a good time to come forward. Okay. Hearing none. I believe we don't need a formal vote on this at this time. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll move to the next item. I believe we are now on the agenda under new and old business, and Mr. Trezenberg is next up. Amendment two, Swift Creek Land Management Plan. It's all yours, Mr. Trezenberg.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Pretten, members of the council. Tonight, we have before you a proposed amendment number two to the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, which was adopted back into state law in the 90s. If you'll recall, the town of Garner initiated the very first amendment to that plan last year, where we requested the reclassification of some properties down along the 401 corridor to allow for some denser development in places in recognition of the fact that we had actually lowered the intensity of development in other areas within the greater Swift Creek watershed. This request comes from the county on behalf of the Wake County School System. What you see here up on your screen is the southeast corner of Yates Mill and Tryon Roads. So this is a considerable distance from the town of Garner, but since we are a signing member of the land management plan, everybody has to agree to these amendments when proposed. So you see here the larger Swift Creek watershed area. Here's Yates Mill Pond and Tryon Road. Garner proper is over here along the 401 corridor. So again, a considerable distance. The request is to take these parcels from rural designation to new urban designation, which allows for a higher amount of impervious surface, which they would need to actually construct the school on the property. There is existing new urban on both the other sides of Tryon Road and Yates Mill Pond Road, so it's not a tremendous stretch to go ahead and ask for this corner to be incorporated as well. This will be a small school with a fairly small footprint. It is specifically for children in grades six through 12 for the special needs population. So they're only anticipating about 200 children for this site. Raleigh and Cary are the two municipal service operators in this area. And as they've been discussing this site and some of the things that could be done, Raleigh has actually endorsed taking some existing sewer services in this area and through this project, actually redirecting some of the sewer flow to take some pressure off of one of their facilities on Jones Franklin and actually redirecting that flow to the town of Cary. The town of Cary was willing to go ahead and accept that, and they will in turn be annexing this property if approved for development. So this is pretty much just a courtesy. Like I say, it doesn't really have much in the way of any impact to Garner directly, but again, because we are a signatory to the agreement, we are required to vote one way or the other, to approve or not. And so the motion before you recommend it would be to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment. And I will answer any questions if you have them, and Ms. Parker is here from the school system as well, should you have any of her.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. Councilmembers, any questions, comments? Ms. Parker, did you want to make any comments, or are you just here if there are any questions? Is that right?
There being none, I move we approve second amendment to the Swift Creek Land Management Plan.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, voting for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. Thank you, thank you, Jeff. So the second item of business under new and old business is the facility naming policy that Mr. Roy Lance presented to us, what is it, one meeting ago, or two meetings ago, when the council heard your presentation, wanted to think on that a little bit and consider it. And I believe you have made maybe a couple of minor wording tweaks in it. And so you're now prepared to present it back to the council for possible approval. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. Thank you. And I don't really have anything prepared in terms of a PowerPoint, because it's almost identical to whatever last time. The only two changes that I did make as a result of the feedback from council at the first discussion that we had was a change under the definition of facilities section, because there were some questions, or a question anyway, about whether streets, a town-owned street, is something that would be eligible to be renamed. That was always the intention, but I did go ahead and clarify on here by spelling it out that that is an option. I did add, though, that there are a few additional implications, just because when you change the name of a street, you're changing people's address on that street, and there's a few extra steps we would have to go through. But certainly, something that could be managed is just something that's a little bit more complicated than renaming an element of a park or something like that. But covered by this policy, though, so we did want to clarify, make it clear that that was the intention. And the other change that I made was on the last section titled procedure. There was a suggestion or an idea that in addition to having a public hearing, there could be a public comment period. And really, that list is just intended to give examples, and so there's any range of different actions that council could take, of course, but that one seemed to be a logical one to include in the list, so I added that as well. Other than those two changes, this is identical to what you all saw at the two meetings ago when we first discussed it. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or you all can proceed with approving it if you're so inclined.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roy Lance. And I would just quickly comment that Ms. Behringen and I had a chance to review this as the Law and Finance Committee. We think it's a good policy, and you've made some changes that probably have enhanced it some. So at this point, I'll open the discussion for any council members who desire to either ask questions or make comments about it. Hearing none, I'm inclined to call for a motion to approve this facility naming policy as presented in our agenda packet and explained by Mr. Roy Lance.
I move approval of the attached facility naming policy as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There's no opposition? Thank you, Mr. Roy Lance, for your good work on this, okay? Okay, we are now to the section of our agenda under committee reports. And Ms. Behringen, since the first one is HR committee, if you don't mind, well, excuse me, that's me and Mr. Vance. And I would just report to the full council that Mr. Vance and I had a meeting this past week, or it was last week, I guess, sort of an organizational meeting. And we will be doing some interviews for vacancies on various advisory committees, I believe it's on the 11th and 12th of this month. And the town clerk or assistant clerk is in the process of notifying those persons who will be coming in for an interview. And we would hope, our committee would hope, to make some selections and have a recommendation back to the full council, ideally by the work session or at the end of the month, so that people can start their terms consistent with the new fiscal year. So unless any council member has a question about that, we'll move to the manager's report.
All right, you have Garner info in the back of your packet. And then also, just wanted to mention a couple of dates. You have a flyer in front of you about the volunteer appreciation banquet that will be held on Thursday, June the 6th, 4 to 6, so you're all invited to that. And then also, starting that night, there's going to be the start of the movies on the GPAC lawn, so a series of movies over the next few weeks. So we invite our residents to partake in that event. And the other thing I'd mention is the police department will be hosting a motorcycle rider skills class on Saturday, February the 15th, not February, but June the 15th, skipping a whole half a year. But that will be at 8:45 a.m. at the Garner Police Department. So just a couple of things to mention. And then only other thing I had was a discussion about how you would like to proceed on the budget and us getting closer to making a decision on what scenario, or if you want to have a separate meeting or have some discussion now, or how you would like to handle that.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
Counselor, you've heard from the town manager. I, because we had an opportunity a little earlier to have some discussion, but what say ye in regards to further budget discussion at this point or at a future date?
I can schedule for the 18th, that's fine with me.
18th, okay.
Anybody else, comments?
As part of the regular meeting, just toward the end, it's fine, after the regular business, or...
You can do it on the front end.
Or before.
Do we need to...
Is that...
Go ahead.
We need to discuss which scenario we would support now, or do we do that when we prepare to adopt the budget?
Well, we have prepared, we were preparing by the calendar for the budget to be adopted on the 18th, so I'm not sure how much discussion you'll have and want to be prepared to adopt it the same night, I'm not. So, and we, you know...
What news is going to come up then?
What?
Yeah, I don't know.
Mr. Kennedy asked what news is going to come up, and I think we've...
Are you... What do you need tonight?
Well, typically, I think on that last date, we would have the budget pretty much decided on and have the final budget to present in its final state, and then would have the council vote on that.
So do you need us to tell you what scenario we would prefer tonight?
That would be ideal, but I'm not going to rush you into making a decision. We'll just have to work around whatever schedule you want.
Well, let me just make this observation. Obviously, if the council is not prepared to offer up a specific scenario tonight, and when you come with a budget on the 18th, there's still time, I guess, to determine at that time, even though it may be inconvenient, to make tweaks in it, even though the drop-dead date is the end of the month, right? Even though ideally, we should pass it at our next council meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, just I'll leave it open for another minute or two if any council member wants to go on record. I think I have during the earlier discussions indicated my inclination on the scenarios that we have. And if any other council member wants to do that at this time, probably help the town manager in preparing for that meeting. If council members prefer not to do that, then I guess, at least in my mind, the scenarios, as you've shown us, are still on the table.
I can offer my input. I would prefer scenario number two.
Okay. Two persons that are myself and Ms. Behringen at this point for that. Welcome back, Mr. Vance.
Based upon my knowledge, I prefer also 2.75, scenario number two.
Any other council members care to weigh in or make comments?
Spoiler, but I said we had our budget meetings, and I'll stand by, I would not go above two cents, and I won't, so.
Okay.
I'm going to give you one of the scenarios presented. The shortage this year was 1.4... The shortage this year was 1.452, and I told staff and I met with them, I would go about the two cent. I'd go halfway, and the other half could be through fund balance and through cuts, and so I will not go above two cents. Last year changed the way that we borrowed the motor vehicle fee, and we increased it from $15 to $30. Now, that's like a tax increase to people, but we have changed our policy now. Those dollars are all dedicated to going to street and road improvement, infrastructure improvement for the roads, so we have, because of the study, and that was mentioned by Michael here in the budget, that we need to spend well over $1 million a year to try to keep our streets the same level of degrade over the next decade, and even at the scenario we've got, it would slightly come down, but it would be increased dramatically over what we had been funding, which was a half million dollars or less, so. Had a form of a tax increase last year, even though it didn't come on the tax bill, it came every time you paid your registration fee, so it could have been spread out over 12 months, depending on how many vehicles you own, but still, you know, if you own two vehicles, that was $30. That was like a three-cent tax increase in a way, but those funds are dedicated specifically to road improvement, so as I said, I would not go above two cents, so there's not, I don't support scenario one, two, or three. I reckon I support scenario zero, because I'm probably, zero chance of what I support happening, so anyway.
Okay. By the way, I just paid my registration fee on one of my vehicles just a couple of days ago, and that fee is obviously on there, yeah.
Repair one more pothole then.
Yeah. Mr. Kennedy?
Scenario two.
I have nine vehicles with my business and personal, so.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yep. You definitely are aware of it, for sure. Okay. I heard Mr. Kennedy.
I support scenario two.
So, Mr. Town Manager, does that give you the guidance you think you need?
That does. We'll bring back scenario two as the base budget for your approval or discussion at the next meeting on the 18th.
Okay.
And it can still vary from that if anybody's so inclined to make a good enough argument.
And Michael, Mike?
He's gone.
Oh, is he gone? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that was everything he needed to prepare the document, so, but I'm pretty sure that'll.
Yeah. I mean, he'll have the ordinance prepared based on that, but it's always the council's discretion to make whatever choice they'd like to make at the time, and if that means we have to go back later and change the ordinance, I mean, you will still have voted on and approved a budget. It just will need some modification to the numbers before it gets processed, so we can handle it either way.
Okay, yeah. So, there's still an opportunity to change it or tweak it until we make our final vote on it, but for now, you have the guidance, I think, of the majority of the council, okay?
We'll have something specific to present to you.
Okay. Any council member have any further questions about that and where we're going next with the budget?
I'd make one impromptu, or a couple of comments. For the folks that are listening in and watching, it sounds like it's real easy for us to adopt a tax rate increase. I don't think there's a soul here on the council that relishes that at all. You heard some of the quote justifications, one being that for a while now, we've absorbed medical costs, and that's almost a million dollars, it's changed in the premium costs over the last three to four years, several other things. The, I won't bear to repeat those. I think what's really important is we've had increased costs. There's staff, as the managers looked at ways to hold down costs. I think there's room for in coming months and years for us to continue to look for ways to minimize our costs. To put it in simple terms, is that our tax revenues, our lawn tax revenues increased 5.5% this year. On average, for the last three or four years, they've been increasing about 4%, maybe a little over. Our expenses have been averaging over 6% increase each year. We're on a diverging path. That's got to be corrected. That trend has got to change. There's been plenty of discussions on how we might do that, but those are just ongoing discussions regarding operations. Nobody takes this lightly, and anybody that was not here tonight, please feel free to come and see what goes on at the next, at our meeting on the 18th, but tax rates are not popular. Sometimes they're necessary. This year seems to be one of those years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Well-stated. Appreciate those comments. Okay. All right. I believe I'm ready to move to the attorney report, if there is one.
I'm on the agenda. I can mention that whenever.
Okay. We'll come back around to that in just a few minutes. Okay. Counselor reports are next. I'll start with Mr. Singleton, go that way, and then circulate back this way.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'll mention we had a former member of the town board, longtime resident and business owner here, Mary Ann Sparkman, passed away a few days ago, and she served in the town council, I think mainly late '70s and through the '80s, also as Mayor Pro Tem four times, so I want to mention that. Someone who served and gave several years to Garner, and she and her husband have, you know, run and operated along with their daughter Donna for many, many, many years, decades, and always supported baseball teams and other community projects. I just want to mention that, Ms. Sparkman's passing, and the years of service she gave to the town.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. I didn't know her personally, but I've heard many good comments about her, and I know many people in Garner, loved her, and she was well-respected. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes. In one of the contracts we approved tonight for the preliminary engineering on the realignment and extension of Jones Sausage Road, the engineering firm provided a schedule of deliverables and certain milestones for their study, and one of those was September 20th, when they'll provide us a preliminary design or preliminary plan. That's going to be a high watermark, and I hope that's one that we can, Rodney, that we can keep them on task, so we can see that and on schedule. I wondered that, one of the provisions was that they needed to be notified by tomorrow for the authorization to proceed, and if we can do that, then we're holding our end of the bargain, and expect them to deliver on the 20th of September. Second item, the Jürgen property, it's been, it's had a haircut, and it looks a lot better. If we can find somebody that's got pruning shears and tackled his rubbery, then.
Yeah, we got that on the schedule.
That's good. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'll move to Ms. Behringen.
Yes, sir. I have three items. One, there is a dark green Toyota parked right on the street, right inside Penny Street as you turn onto the street. It's been there for a week. There is a white cloth on it, as if it's a vehicle in distress, but I understand it's been reported once, but it's still there, and nobody seems to know who it belongs to, and nothing's being done to it. So, it needs to be moved. Second is, there's a house at 1321 West Garner Road that looks like it has become the new city dump, so I would appreciate code enforcement having a look at it. This has never looked wonderful, but it's way worse than not wonderful right now. And I had a citizen ask me today if we are planning or intending to do anything as remembrance of the Conagra tragedy, 10 years coming up on June the 9th. So, has that come across anybody's radar?
That has not been something that --
That's what I told him.
-- I've discussed with any council members, yes.
So, at this late date, we probably will not do anything.
Be difficult, I think, to schedule anything.
Okay. That's all, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Vance?
Oh, yes. First, I would say that on this past Saturday, one of the local churches in North Garner conducted a community day, and which I'm proud to say that our police chief represented the police department and part of outreach efforts, which I believe is very important when it comes to policing and the community, getting to know who is on the force. Thank you to the town of Garner Police Department. And in reference to what Councilman Kennedy said about the conceptual plans for Jones Sausage Road, I think that should be one of the priority projects in the near future, because we have a good problem, and that is growth, and with growth comes traffic, and with traffic, it's going to require doing things differently. One of the things we have to do differently is to look at how we can better improve Jones Sausage Road, so that that will not be a potential, well, a continuous bottleneck the way it is, and I look forward to seeing those conceptual plans in the very near future. And that's all I have for the moment.
Okay. Thank you. So, thank you very much. I'll mention a couple of things. I believe the police chief's still here, commend him and his staff on their, I believe it's their annual torch run that took place this past week on a very hot day, but a number of participants and raised funds for a good cause, and I'm always encouraged to see law enforcement take the lead on that, and they do a good job every year, so thank you, sir, and your department. This is probably a minor concern or complaint. On Avasboro Road, where there is construction going on there, I guess at the Georgetown Manor, there's like a, it's like a steel.
Plate, because they're.
Plate, yeah. How long does that have to be in place? Does anybody know?
Until they.
Do they finish the project?
Probably an open cut in the road, so until they, I don't know what they're doing, you know, as far as connections, but it'll need to stay there until it's repaired.
Okay, yeah. Somebody had asked me about that, and I was wondering how long that might be necessary there. Okay. All right. I believe those are all the items I have, and we will prepare to go into closed session. Mr. Vance, you were able to get the mayor home, and so everything's okay there?
Mayor's home, got home safely.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir, for assisting with that.
Pleasure.
So, Mr. Attorney, I know we requested, I requested a closed session for personnel matter, and I guess the citation for your session is listed here, 143318, 11A3.
Yes, sir. Yours will be 11A5.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to those two state statutes stated by the attorney, 11A3 and 11A5.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Is there a second?
Second. One regarding litigation, one regarding personnel. I would say that.
Okay. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All approved. We'll be in closed session. The council went into closed session to discuss two matters. One of those had to do with litigation involving our attorney. We took no specific action on that matter, and the second matter had to do with council's responsibility relating to a personnel issue, and at this point, we have not taken any official action there. So, council members, unless there's any other business to come before this council, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Okay. All right.